Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Work Session for November 1st, 2021. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we continue to give you praise and thanks for your many blessings, and ask you that you will continue to bless our schools there, our students, and that we will continue to lead this school system in the way you would have us do. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask everyone to remain standing. We lost a bus driver this past week, and I would just ask if the Board doesn't mind, if we just take a brief moment of silence in recognition of Isabel McKenzie.
Okay, item number three, we have some special recognitions.
All right, if I could ask, our two bus drivers come on up, Mr. Green and Mr. Khan. As God mentioned last week, I believe it was Wednesday, we had an extremely unfortunate situation take place on one of our buses that resulted in the passing of a beloved bus driver, Ms. McKenzie. And whenever something like that happens, others involved have to make decisions. And so as part of that, I'd like to recognize these two gentlemen, first off, there are several others. But as part of that, as I always say, it's mission first, people always. We still had a busload of students that needed to get home. Without any hesitation, without any concern for their own time, without concern of compensation or anything of that nature, these two gentlemen stepped up, took it upon themselves to make sure they took all the students that were left on that bus and made sure they got home. They went above and beyond. Now, I also would be remiss if I didn't mention that Mr. Green really stepped up as being one of the first responders to perform CPR. And God bless you for what you had to do, both you gentlemen, and I appreciate what you do each and every day, and I tell everyone, I couldn't do what you guys did. I know that for a fact. But you guys do it day in, day out, and you do it with love and compassion, and you care for our students, and I greatly appreciate that. So on behalf of the Board, I'd love to be able to recognize you with a certificate, and I want to read it to you, but I better put my glasses on. So I don't miss anything, but certificate appreciation presented to Mr. Nathan Green for superior performance under extreme pressure during a time of crisis, ensuring the safety and well-being of students. And I'd like to say so. And Mr. Robert Khan for superior performance under extreme pressure during a time of crisis, ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. If I could ask as well, I have three students that I'd also like to have come up, and Mr. Booker, would you call your three students up for me, please?
So it's Sony Woods, you've got Lucas Stakes, and Gavin Gurbidge.
Now, those of you who know me, I spent 20 years in the Army. In time of crisis, people do one of two things, okay? Some of them just freeze, and others act. These three individuals acted. With a busload of students and a bus driver incapacitated, they took action to make sure that everybody was taken care of and emergency responders immediately got to the site. Now, I would tell you that I watched this video unfortunately too many times. These three stood out with what they did that day. And I would say that you're in what grade? Sixth grade, eighth grade, and seventh grade. Amazing to have the presence of mind to be able to do what they did, to call 911, to make sure that, I saw the actions that you two did in front of check for pulse and everything that took place as part of that, but to calm everybody and to ask them to go to the back of the bus and to make sure that control was had. I would tell you it's amazing what you all did. And parents, you have got to be proud of these three young individuals, that they stood up, and today I want to recognize them for their civil service to this community. So if we don't mind, if I'll read these off. Sony Woods for her superior performance under extreme pressure, ensuring the safety and well-being of others in a time of crisis. Lucas, come on over here, Lucas, for superior performance under extreme pressure, ensuring the safety and well-being of others in a time of crisis. And Gavin, come on over here, for superior performance under extreme pressure, ensuring the safety and well-being of others in a time of crisis. Stay right here, guys, I want to take a picture with the Board as well, but if you'll slide over this way, Mr. Booker, do you have anything you'd like to say about your fine students?
No, I just want to say, you know, in times of crisis, a lot of people run away from the event, away from the trouble. These guys ran too. And it's nice to know, you know, so often we think about students depending on us, but it's nice to know that in such a time that we can depend on our students as well. So proud of these guys, and you can tell they care about their fellow man, and thank you.
We appreciate all of you. Stay here, let's get a good picture, we got the Board there, ready?
Y'all get closer. We need it real close. Like ten some.
Anyone like to say anything before we leave? You took charge, I'm going to tell you something, you gotta say something. Really was amazing.
Awesome, awesome.
God bless all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Awesome.
I would also be remiss if I did not recognize two of the neighbors that also assisted that were not able to be here tonight, but Jennifer Presson and her daughter Ashton Presson and Ally Harney were also instrumental in taking care of the emergency situation. So again, unfortunately, we're not able to be here, but just amazing for somebody to step up and help in a situation like that. Madam Chair?
Okay, and as we carry on with our meeting, we would love to have you stay, but if you need to go, we also understand that as well. So you may be excused if you need to, you're welcome.
Not you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, Citizens Address the Board. Do we have anyone sign in, Ms. Lane? Okay. All right, item number five is Approval of the Work Session Agenda. We have our agenda items before us, if I could have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewlett, second. Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. All right, this time I'll turn it over to Dr. Pulis for our items of information.
All right, our first area under Goal Area 1 Student Success last Thursday, and Rusty, if you'll pull up that first document. The state announced the graduation rate, and so I'm extremely proud of McIntosh Academy. Came in at a 97.5, only two tenths lower than last year, but they're well above the state average of 83.7. So the hard work of Ms. McClellan, Ms. McLean, the teachers, the administration with Mr. Willis, that really dug down and did what needed to be done to make sure that our students graduated on time. So I'm extremely, extremely proud of the work that was done at the high school, and we're going to continue with that trend. And that being said, I'd like to pull up the next slide. It's the Cohort 2022. As we stand right now with the first semester approaching the end, we're at 77%. Again, we're continuing to see improvement, that movement is going forward. Our goal is always to be above 90% graduation rate. So we have 17 students that are still not on track, that we're working with, everyone gets a mentor to work with them, and so I expect that, you know, the bad part of where we're at at this point has directly to do with COVID, and so students making sure they're on track. So we're going to continue to work on this, but again, I'm extremely proud of the work and the understanding of our teachers and our administration at the high school of trying to get our kids to graduate. Any questions at all on the graduation rate or where we're at on any of that? All right, if not, we'll move to the next one, which is the Fall Break Two Days of Intercession. Just to give a quick update, we did the first two days, and I think at the high school we did Tuesday, Wednesday. First time we've done an intercession, but it was a success. We had students that came in, we provided them with meal as well as with special tutoring, and I think a lot of lessons learned on how to do this the next time, and I see some heads being nodded back there, but I'm extremely proud because we have to get our kids caught back up, and that's one more thing that we're doing to try to make sure that we do so. So any comments, Mr. Booker, you can give me on your intercession and all?
I was surprised at the turnout. I thought we wouldn't have too many kids show up, but we had 20 in 22, and with the COVID pause that took the two weeks out, there were a lot of students that had missing assignments, students that really just did not hit the virtual hole, so to speak, and so that gave them some time to come in and back over the missing assignments, get back in traffic.
And I would say that looking at the numbers, we had about 10% of our student body attending, either at the elementary, middle, or the high, and so for 10%, that's a pretty strong number. All right, so, thank you, sir. The first nine-week school status report, we conducted that, I guess, was it last week, at all three schools, and that's a specially designed time for the schools to dig in their data, and as part of that, you know, we talk about attendance and discipline and academic success and whatever else we can do. I would tell you now, we're on our second year of really doing that, and we're getting better and better every time that we do it. I'm proud of the administrators, they're digging in and they're finding, this isn't about a gotcha moment, it's about figuring out what do we need to do next, and, you know, looking at the data is one thing, but then deciding that we need to do this, we need to change that, and I just wanted to make sure I let the Board know, your administrators and your teachers are working extremely hard to make sure that our students are successful, so I'm proud of them. Next area up here is the Class Works. If I could ask Mr. Booker and Ms. Sheets to come up and talk about the Class Works as an intervention? Briefly?
Briefly. How's everybody?
Good.
All right, I wish that microphone, is it live? Because I love a microphone.
Briefly, remember the briefly.
Okay, all right. So Class Works, and I don't want to scare you, I'm not going to go into too much detail, I promise you it'll be like, quick. So the State Board of Education, you know, we have to do what's called MTSS, which is Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and they were really good about describing what that was, but not so good at describing how we are exactly supposed to do that in our schools. Basically, here are the guidelines, now go do it and get us some data. So that's been really hard, we haven't been doing a very good job. We're not the only school system that has not been doing a good job, we've called around lots of other school systems, worked in a few other school systems, and really trying to meet those requirements, and I know Mr. McNair and I have sat on countless meetings and webinars and things like that, looking for things to meet the requirements. And basically, what we have to do is we have to provide research evidence-based interventions, so it's not just working with the students, it has to be research and evidence-based, but it also has to be specific to the students' learning needs, okay? And also has to be during the school day. So, you know, all this is getting a little more specific, then you have to answer the question of do the interventions fit the problems, and then you have to do certain progress monitoring to provide data to see if they're progressing, and if not, to move them. Anyway, it's a lot. So, having said all that, we've done a good job, like at the middle school you have a remediation, they've set the time period to make this happen. At the elementary school, they have Tiger Time, so the time to make this happen, and the teachers are working with students, but what we were lacking was that research evidence base and the progress monitoring tools that would show data, and you have to have 20 different forms. It's complicated, but anyway. So along comes Class Works, and I'm not saying it's a panacea, but it is, it is meeting all these requirements. It's tier two and tier three certified, it's got their, meets all their requirements, but the biggest thing is that their progress monitoring tool is certified by the National Center of Intensive Intervention, which it's reliable and valid, and to get those reliable and valid bubbles to both light up, that's something. What I like best about this intervention is that it coordinates with MAP, so talk about being specific. So a student takes a MAP test, they're not doing well in reading, but it starts them exactly where they need to be in reading. And am I talking about just having a kid go on a computer? No, absolutely not. We don't want to take the teachers out of the equation, so the teachers will still meet, they'll do their remediation classes, but they can also have them work with this research evidence-based system, they can do the progress monitoring tool that's got all these, you know, reliable and valid results, so that's really good. Mr. Booker, did you want to say anything?
I don't know all that much about Class Works in and of itself, what I can speak to is the remediation classes and sort of the logistics of MTSS, what was formerly RTI, and how that's going to help us. Because the things that Shelley was talking about, you have to provide those interventions, you have to see if they're working, you have to do it during the school day, all these things, you can be taking kids out of their own classes to do. If you're doing that, they're missing math, they're missing science, they're missing social studies. But if we do it within that remediation block, which we've already set aside, it's going to be a lot more helpful. And the remediation, we've had that class for a few years, but the issue has been, we've got 10 kids in the class, and they've got varying different skill deficits, okay? So I could teach this kid, but it's not exactly what this one needs, which is not exactly what this one needs. So rather than take up all that individual time, we can coordinate with MAP, and that MAP test is going to tell us exactly what they need, and it's going to design a program more specifically for them. So it's going to make our remediation programs a lot more effective, a lot more time-effective, and a lot easier on the teachers, so they can spend their efforts and energy towards the kids in other ways.
And we can progress.
You've mentioned MAP twice, but I just want to make sure the Board understands that, you know, that's our universal.
That's our new program. It's our academic screener for reading, math, and language arts, and it's extremely beneficial and gives us a lot of good data on the students. And then what I'm asking is for the three-year buydown, which basically locks us in at a really lower rate, and anytime you do something, you're going to do it for three years anyway, because if you just throw the baby out with the bathwater, that's not. But I'd like to start with the middle school, because the elementary school's got the new reading program, and they've got some other things. I want to see how it works with the middle school, and if it's working well, which I'm assuming it will, but hopefully it will, then we can have the option to use it for the elementary school, and they've agreed to give us that lock-in, even though it's supposed to go up in January, they've agreed to extend that to us until August, until we try it out.
So Ms. Sheets, let me make sure that I'm straight on this contract, you're saying $60,000, is that for both schools for three years?
That would be for both schools for three years.
Okay.
And we wouldn't pay that all right now, half of that we would wait and make sure, you know, that that is something we would want to use at the elementary level, so.
Before we allocate it?
Right.
And what would be the funding source for that?
That would be Tammy's at, it's learning loss, right?
One of the cares, it fits in the 20% that we have to do.
Right. Okay. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Go on and on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item up here is Goal Area 2, which is Organizational Effectiveness, and just to bring to the Board's attention, we talked about this last time, but the 2016 Bond Sinking Fund Bank Account, now that we're taking care of all our bonds, we're going to go ahead and close that, but we just wanted to make sure the Board, now Tammy, do we need the Board to approve that?
We have in the past.
To close a bank account? Okay, so I will ask if we will, Madam Chair, if we could ask for the Board, we can do that next week, but that we'll ask the Board to approve for the closure of a bank account, so it's documented, that may. The other thing that's on here, and that, you know, Ms. Franklin and I have worked over the last two years with the Huntington Bank, who financially manages our energy lease account, and we've struggled with it because they make numerous mistakes, and, you know, Tammy catches them, and she brings their attention, they argue with us, and so we went forward to the individuals who coordinated this lease and said, we need to change. And Tammy wrote the letter, I endorsed it, and they were reluctant, because they said the contract requires that we do such and such. They saw the same thing we did, and they decided that you're right, we need to change. So they're willing to change it to the Bank of the Ozark, and we want to make sure the Board is aware of that. And we don't manage that, it's done separately, but they're the ones that we end up sending our money to, to make sure payments are made to this lease. Anything else you want to say on that?
I would just like to add that, once this is complete, there's, we'll see that there's a little over $1,000 left in that Huntington account, I'm just going to ask them to close that account and send us the money, and we'll put that in our debt service account, and then when the new bank fills us next summer, you know, for the next payment, you know, we'll just forward the money to them directly, and just get Huntington out of the picture completely.
And we'll ask the Board as well, when we do all that, to bless it. All right, thank you, ma'am. Next area up here is Car Rider Pro. So I went to Mr. Boone about three months ago, and I said, Rusty, why can't we put a little reader at the entrance to Todd Grant, and like they do over at St. Simon's in Jekyll, if they want to catch the cars, they have a little barcode, and maybe we can capture that and send something and identify the students as they need to be picked up? And so he went to Googling, figure out what we could do, and came up with Car Rider Pro, and Ware County's been using it for about two years, I think, maybe a little longer, and we sent a group up there to look at it, and we are in the experimental phase of it, but it's now in place after, what, the first week, second week?
We just started week two.
We just started week two of using it, and I want you to watch this very brief video so you understand what it is, and then I'll, we'll elaborate on it in just a second.
I think if you explain what they were doing before.
Yeah, I will.
Envision an automated student pickup management system that is easy to use and will help you safely and efficiently dismiss your students at the end of the day. It's called Car Rider Pro, and it's revolutionizing the way schools are handling their afternoon dismissal process. Car Rider Pro helps to organize your pickups, allowing traffic to move smoothly around your campus, keeping students safe and parents happy. Schools such as Southside Elementary or Sales Kentucky are noticing vast improvements over their old systems.
Where we typically had 150 cars come through, they all parked and came in, picked up their kids, and then left, and all left at one time, and it created a lot of safety situations we were concerned about. Now that is completely orderly from top to bottom, it operates the exact same every single day, so people know exactly what to expect and where they're headed.
Here's how it works. Parents and guardians are assigned uniquely encoded tags that are hung from their rearview mirror, allowing the school to know who is picking up each student. As the parents vehicles pass the Car Rider Pro reader gate, they are automatically detected in the order they arrive. Line viewers inside the school display the students' names and tag numbers in order. The school's staff can stage the students into groups, helping to expedite their release.
The tab to get back to where the kids are, they know your number, and they just bring them on out.
They come out in line, they come right to the car, they get right in, and it just goes boom, boom, boom. Much better than the old system.
The vehicles are detected again when they leave, creating a record of every pickup. After performing a site survey, we can create a customized, cost-effective solution for your school's dismissal process.
I don't think you can put a price tag on safety, and making sure that you put the right kids in the hands of the right folks.
The Car Rider Pro software is simple and easy to use. The administrative tools allow you to create students and assign hang tags to all their guardians. Students can be linked together to form car pools. Schedules can be added for students with complex pickup situations. Photos of each student can be uploaded for easy recognition during the dismissal process. Running the line manager on a smartphone allows you to modify the line on the fly and deal with any issues. Dismiss your students from the classroom using the classroom viewer, or gather your students in a central location and project the line viewer on a large screen for everyone to see. Students stay engaged and will help line themselves up.
And there are no things to adjust, once you got it set up and you got it set up in the right way, it kind of runs itself.
And if it was 10, I'd give it a 10, because it just makes things so much easier.
Let Car Rider Pro help you organize the chaos of your afternoon dismissal process. We would be happy to create a customized solution for your school. For more information, please visit.
So the old process was Ms. Riles, Allison, Allison Riles, would go out and the cars start loading up 30, 40 minutes ahead of time. So they're all there, and she goes out and she takes their names down, takes them down on a piece of paper, then they call them in, and then Ms. Robinson is in there, she's calling out Johnny Smith, you know, and they're heading out the door. Long, arduous process, and to be honest, a very inaccurate process. So what used to take about probably 30 minutes plus, we've seen already in the one week, it's down to about 10. I mean, it's gone quickly, and so we're not using RF readers yet, we're just experimenting with it, but right now, Ms. Riles still goes out, but she does it on her cell phone, and she does the tag number, all she does is punch the tag number in, and then the kid's picture shows up and puts them in a line, and then they send them out in sequence. So I want you to be aware of it, they're going to continue to, you know, do a beta test on it to see if it's worth it. I would expect that just what we've seen already has been pretty incredible, and the accountability piece, that once we're done, they can go through and look to say, that car came through at this particular time and picked up that kid. Did you want to say something? You had your hand in the bag. Mr. Boone has been working with them on this, our next step on this is to incorporate the pre-K, so that the pre-K can be dismissed in the same manner out at the other end of the building, and then eventually, if we like it, to actually add the RF readers onto it, so it's automatically done, and there'll be one for the pre-K area, one when they come in, and one when they go out, so it keeps track of everybody. That process, and if anybody really always worry about, it's our elementary school students in trying to make sure that's done, but it speeds it along, and we've seen that already.
Is this a one-time fee?
The purchase of the equipment, if we do that, the RF reader, would that be a one-time, and then it's a yearly subscription of about $1,000, which is, again, very cost-effective. The next time Allison Riles has to go out in the rain, she'll be glad to pay herself, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's what she does, and that's how they dismissed her in those rainy days, and so I think it's going to be a good program for us.
Is this needed at the middle school as well?
Their numbers right now, I don't think so.
Okay.
But we talked about it, and that that would be needed there.
Our students are a little bit older group, too, a little more mature.
Yeah, they don't want to.
Sell them sufficiently.
Yeah. I mean, we have kids that don't even know what their cars look like out here, so it's difficult.
With the parents that show up at 1:45? I mean, is it going to hold, is the reader going to hold them there for an hour?
Absolutely. Soon as it pops them in the system, it stays there until they're dismissed, and it actually, you check them off and clear them off the program. Now, we did have somebody try to sneak in today, into the loop without a tag, and she happened to be pulled to the side, because the other parents ratted on her.
That's one thing you don't do is cut that traffic circle line.
Yeah, I tell you what, that's brutal.
It is brutal, so. All right, so again, that's something that I think is very positive going on at the elementary school. Next area up here is our Five-Year School Nutrition Administrator Review, and I just want to commend Ms. Harrison and her staff, they did a great job. The state team came in, conducted a top-to-bottom review of their operating, their money, their financial management, and spent that day, I think it was Tuesday, the 24th, and when they were here, they went to visit primarily the middle school, and observing that, just walked away with nothing but compliments. And we had a few findings, but things that were corrected like that. For example, the lunchroom manager wasn't close enough to determine if they had all three of the items that they were supposed to have, all right, moved down two more feet, things of that. Very good audit, and I'm proud of Ms. Harrison, again, just so we know, that doesn't happen at every school system, but she's done an amazing job. We're proud of her. Anything else you wanted to say on that, Mr. Masah?
She did, like you said, an outstanding job in a very difficult situation, the supply chain and everything is affecting her, but she keeps, every day feeding the kids and making it happen.
And we did get, as part of that process, a review of our free and reduced lunch. You know, right now, we have a program that allows for all of our students to eat free You know, right now, we have a program that allows for all of our students to, to eat free and reduced, totally free. And so, we have recertification now for another four years, which is, again, a very positive thing for this community.
Mr. Masah, you said the, the supply chain, are, are we able to, the distributors, are they able to keep up with, with product?
If they don't have the exact product we order, they do give us substitutes that, that do work. But for instance, there's something as simple as trays, Ben, scarcity, to even get a tray. So, just managing that change of an order is difficult. We've got a menu out, so, but she's done a great job with that. But nothing that we haven't been able to overcome, and we are able to get food, that's, that's not been a problem.
She was pretty creative too, though. She took the, the to-go boxes and just split them in half and used them, one of the times that we didn't have plates. I mean, and, you know, to improvise, overcome, adapt. All right, so, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. And the next item up here, unfortunately, is, kind of goes along the line with that supply chain and the lack of, of employees and the increase of money that needs to be paid to employees is our cleaning contract. So, we met with the gentleman, when they changed over from back to KBS, they made a commitment to keep price the same for one year. Well, that year's up. And so, as part of everything that's going on, inflation, they're asking for a 5% increase. And I have them committed to three years at that price, to stay at that price. So, I would tell you that them managing the cleaning process is well worth the amount of money we're paying. If anybody's ever tried to manage bringing in hiring and, and everything that goes with, with the custodial staff, it's very difficult. And so, they handle all that for us. And they're very responsive. We say, "Look, so-and-so's, it's not getting cleaned," they do a good job of getting it done for us. I don't want this any more than anybody else, but the increase would be about 5%, and I think that's calculated a little over $2,000 a month. So, for the rest of this year, this fiscal year, that's about $13,000, a little less than $13,000. And for the next years to come, it's close to $25,000. That's a very large contract that we have with them as well. So, I would ask the board if they would consider that for the next week, that we move forward. We are using CARES money to pay for that, so we're able to, to put that over there and, and handle that.
And you say that's locked in for three years?
I, I've asked them to commit to three years on that, and that's part of what I've said. You know, to go back out and get another organization to do it is very difficult, so. All right, so, any other questions on that?
As long as they're keeping up with the cleaning and doing what they're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
I would say we're lucky to only have a 5% increase.
I, I agree, I think that some...
It's going to be over 36 more too.
I've talked to Glen County, they have a difficult time finding people to actually clean. And so, and they're doing it on their own. So, I feel like we're, we're still have a good organization that's willing to come in and, and do what we've asked. And they come above me on, we call them and say, "Hey, we need this," they do it for us.
And Dr. Pulis?
Yes, ma'am.
When will our CARES money expire?
Three years from now, I think, is it now extended. Originally, it was two years, and now we have carryover for another year after that, is that right?
So, so are we keeping a running checklist on what CARES is paying for that we may have to continue on with in three years?
And what we will no longer use, such as a lot of the money that we've already spent, we know that we're going to, some of the positions, for example, they will no longer be there. So, we know those are folded and we go back to our original allocations. And a lot of the other programs that we have, again, we continue to try to make sure, especially with software, if we're not using it, we're not, if it's not beneficial, we get rid of it. The small decisions that we make add up. The next item up here is our policy, we mentioned this last time, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, we're, we're reviewing our wellness policy, the EEE. But when we do adopt that policy, I would ask that we rescind EED, which is the vending machine, because it's all mentioned already in EEE. That's just to remind everybody where we're at. If you have any issues with the minutes from the previous meetings, if you will please make sure that you bring those to my attention and Ms. Lane's attention, we'll make sure they get corrected before the next meeting. And then if I could ask Ms. Franklin if you'll go through the financial report?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On to page one, the general operating account. We began the month of October with 1.25 million. We have receipts of 1.28 million and dispersments of 1.58 million, leaving us with a balance of $950,577 in the general operating account. On to page 27, general fund revenues. The school year is 33.33% complete. And we have 1.9 million of receipts for the general fund, which is 13.36% of our budgeted 14.57 million.
Ms. Franklin, on that note, the tax notices went out, and so we do expect that we'll start getting tax money coming in from the financial institutions relatively quickly. So, that'll build our, our funds up for that.
That's, that's correct. On to expenditures. We have 3.5 million in carry-up date expenditures, which is 23.8% of our budgeted expenditures, a 14.6 million. You may notice that they, the DRE has added a column to this report, that now shows the encumbrances, which is the total open purchase orders for the general fund at $180,000. On to page 34, fund balance. The general fund fund balance for October 31st is 810,944. School nutrition. Next page. The school nutrition bank account has $79,260. The next one is the East Bloss projects, $483. Local projects. We began the month with $1,078,000. We had dispersments of $18,655, leaving us with a balance of just over $1,020,500. Bond sinking account, we began the month with $611,73,000. We made that final 2016 bond interest payment of $611,73,000. That left us with a balance of $3.01, which we transferred to the debt service account, so that balance is now zero, so we can close that bank account. Debt service account. We began the month with $1,009,000. We had $137,779 of October East Bloss receipts. And we paid off the 2014 bond interest at just over $1,009,000, leaving us with $138,839 in the debt service account. And those October East Bloss were up 20% from October of last year. And finally, the energy efficiency lease account, we have $1,228 in there. Are there any questions? We'll go and get back.
I'm just excited those bonds are paid out.
I will let you know that we are now in the process of gathering all of our information for our audit. That's always an arduous task, a lengthy task, and Ms. Franklin does a great job. Every day, she has to create all the reports and get them all boxed up and ready. Last year, everything was done virtually, we had to scan it in and send it to them, but this year, we expect that they'll come visit McIntosh and conduct the audit. So, that's in the process and in the works. Anything else you want to say about that?
Hopefully, they'll get started this month.
Yeah, that'd be good. All right, well, thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Yes, thank you.
All right, if I could ask Mr. Masah to come up and we'll talk about some of the facility issues that are taking place.
Great evening, boards. A pleasure to come before you this evening. To start off, my report is with the McIntosh County Middle School Kitchen Project. We're in full swing. As you know, we have selected a construction manager, which is Tyson. And they have set out an official proposal, request for proposals, for certain aspects of the job. And their mandatory, or their meeting date for those proposals is Wednesday, November 10th. At 3:30, they'll have a meeting for anybody that's interested. And then the proposals will be due on Wednesday, November 24th, at 10 o'clock. The next step with that, they'll gather all the information together and come up with the final cost of the project, which the, at the December board meeting, we're hoping to present that to you, to say, here's what the project will cost after an extensive search of people to do the work. And then we can make a decision at that point whether we move forward or not. Any questions about the kitchen project? Really exciting times ahead for, for that project, praying that it, it comes in at the price that we can afford. All right, solar panels, I'm really excited about this. We have received the power purchase agreement, it's in Mr. Brown's hands, and the board has it here for you to look over. It's a long document. This is the final, final document that needs to be signed for us to move forward. For the actual installation of the solar panels, we're hoping within the next month or so, it behooves the company to have them all done before December thereafter those tax credits, and they need to have it in before the new, the new year comes out. And they've assured us that, that that's very doable. They have said that they purchased the equipment, they're waiting for it to come and hit the ground, and for us to review this power purchase agreement and find details in it and make a signature, and then we can move forward with that. Again, it's our opportunity to put our, our fingerprint on being green, try to lessen our carbon footprint, and save some money too. There's a money, savings there that we can't deny, and we're really excited about the whole package to say McIntosh is doing green and, and helping out the environment while saving ourselves some money.
And I'll work with Mr. Brown this week to review that, make sure that it's what it's supposed to be, and then we'll discuss it again at the next meeting.
As part of the renovation of our school system, our total going through it, we did surplus that greenhouse, and I was really proud the way we did that, that it wasn't just demolished, it was systematically taken down and reused. We sold it, and the gentleman did a great job, numbered every beam, everything, took it down in a way that it's not going to go to waste, it wasn't just thrown away. But if you drive by the middle school, you'll see that area is going to be cleaned out perfectly tomorrow, and it's just going to be a great staging area for our kitchen project. It's all fenced in, has some hardscape there from the greenhouse flooring. We're going to be able to use it to be a, a perfect staging area. And then, when that's done, it will really open up that side of the school to the beauty that's going to be there. Really excited about that. And then, the next item of business is tree removal. I just wanted to give a very, very special thank you to the county, they stepped up to the plate and they've helped us with the access roads to the two pieces of property that we are looking at cutting. Mr. Boone has on the map, we have a 10-acre plot that is right on the interstate. I'm sure if you'll hover that, yes, see that 10-acre plot? There is a ditch that goes down King Swamp Road, that needed a bed of dirt, and then on top of that, they put a matting down, and then they did rocks on top of that. So, it's a perfect access road for the logging trucks to come in and out. That was a, a substantial cost to us, and, and they stepped up and helped us out in a big way. So, thank you to the county for that. And then we have the area that's behind the baseball field. If you'll look that, there's a little five-acre plot there. The only questions we're having, and we're working with our coaches and Coach Warren and taking a look, there is a thin strip of trees that goes back there that has a, a little effect on the lighting in the afternoons, and whether the sun going down and being in a batter's eye, or the catcher's eye, or the umpire's. Those are the three people mainly involved. It's my opinion that it's only a few minutes that it would really affect, but we're going to actually do a, a real close look at that, sit out there during that time, determine where the sun is going to be during that season, and maybe we'll keep a thin line of trees at the very edge of it. But I'm hoping that we can clear it out and start fresh, but we'll see how that goes. But we want to make a smart choice there, and not to affect any, any vision.
Yeah, we don't want, definitely don't want sun in umpire's eyes.
Absolutely right.
Especially with umpire.
Masah, with the, the cutting of the trees, how much is that going to generate in profit?
You know, it all depends, obviously, on how much comes out of there and what is chip saw, I'm learning a lot about it, how much is poles and, and all, but we're approximately hoping to make about $30,000 is, is a, a general number, possibly more. But the main thing to consider is that every day that we don't, or every year that we don't cut it, that 30,000 gets even less. Those trees are so tightly compacted, they've never been thinned out, that it's just deteriorating right before our eyes. So, it's a good time to start over, make a little bit, but more importantly, to start over and do it right, and hopefully make another beautiful standout there that will produce in the future for the next generation. Great question. Pond dredging, this is a project that I think is going to really add a exclamation point to our high school. That pond area behind the football field has always been just a retention pond. However, we've had today a meeting with a contractor about digging it out, actually having the crane come in and dig it deeper, clean up all the sides, new pipes that go in for the drainage, and then, again, back to that fountain in there. We can really see that being the very first thing that a, a person comes in, and when they sloop around there, they see that, and it can be a real beautiful area. I can envision that during our graduation, a beautiful fountain, colored lights, really good landscaping, and greened up back there to really make a statement to our facility. No need for just a old, dirty retention pond, we can really upgrade that. And hopefully, we'll be using the funding from the trees to fund that project. So, it'll be a, a great trade-off there.
So, there's a chance we can get it by graduation?
That's what we, we've talked about it today, and that's our goal. Dr. Pulis has put that challenge to us, and, and we look to meet that challenge.
Okay.
All right, the gym floor resurfacing, really excited. Today was the first day of our gym floors, it's a yearly task that we have to do every year. They slightly sand it down, take all the old wax off and then re-wax it. That was done today. And then they have approximately a week that we have to stay off it. With the AC on 24/7 for, to cure, we'll, we'll do our due diligence and make sure that it's ready to go right before basketball season. And I'll bring up that in our long-term plan, that we will be revisiting the high school gym floor, because even though we just got it sanded down lightly, it's not the sanding and the refinishing that the high school floor needs, it needs to have all the lines stripped up, relined and redone. It's 15 years old, they're faded, and it's time for us. Again, we still have Kinder Morgan on our floor, and that's been years since we've had any dealing with Kinder Morgan. So, it's a, a great opportunity for us to, again, put an exclamation point on it.
The unfortunate thing about doing the gym floors during the school year is the smell. And it's bad, it's extremely bad. So, we'll do everything possible to make sure we're blowing it outside, but oftentimes, our, our students, you know, will have some issues with it. So, we'll do everything we can to mitigate that.
Well, as part of our five-year painting, painting plan, the painting of the hallways at MCA were, was complete. It was really good on the, I think that was the 400 hall. It was done orderly, all during the break, and they did an outstanding job of that. And we are going to now move over the Thanksgiving break to the 300 hall, and to complete all the classrooms that are, are needing a painting. And McIntosh County Academy will have been checked off for this five-year, and will, will really be updated. The only things that we really need to take care of are a few offices that our staff is going to take care of themselves, a few spare classrooms. But from top to bottom, MCA will have been freshened up in, in the right way. And that leads me right into the summer. Todd Grant, believe it or not, I can't believe it, is already getting to that five-year mark, and it's in need of paint itself. So, we're looking at the prices for a top-to-bottom painting, and then we can keep ourselves on a five-year cycle that is a plan, not just when it needs it. Here's our plan, here's how we do it, and that's how we keep our, our school really looking nice and maintained in a, in a proper way. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Masah.
Thank you.
Stay, stay right there for just a second, so we're going to talk about COVID. So, can you pull that agenda up just a tad? There we go. All right, first thing up there, I just want to remind everyone, when we first started to receive our funding for CARES and, and Esther, basically, we came up with ideas, we talked to the schools, we talked to parents, and so... And so, you know, if you recall, I came up with a, a schedule based on the input and we said, this is what we think we can spend it on. Well, under this plan, every six months, we have to re-engage all our stakeholders and say, all right, is there anything else we need to do and anything else we need to change? So we sent out another survey, um, the survey's out to all stakeholders. We're just asking for feedback and to make sure of that. And that includes anything that they believe that we need to start prioritizing and provide some input on it. So, um, I, I do think that we've done a very good job of making sure that we're, we're doing what the, what the taxpayers expect us to do and with the intent of the actual legislators when they gave us the money. Um, but it's actually quite difficult to spend some of this money. Um, and Tammy smiles, I mean, to have such a problem, but it really, we've got to make sure we do it all legal and, and that we do it in the, with the right pots and everything's done there. So, um, anything else on the ESSR that we need to talk about, Tammy? All right, I, I would ask, again, as we stand here tonight, um, I look around room, we've got a couple of people with their masks on, um, protocol changes. For the la- since the eighth of September, I think the eighth is when we came back off of our pause, we've had a few cases, just a few. And one of the things I told the schools was that I wanted to wait, make sure that we, this wasn't just a short-term thing and then things started to go back up. But as it stands right now, uh, we don't have any employees and I think we have one student that we're tracking with COVID. Um, and we might still get one here, one there. But for the most part, I do believe that our, our practice, our issues with, with the current variant, um, are such that we might want to step back and maybe reduce the requirements for wearing of the mask. Um, it would be my recommendation that, that we remove that requirement from our schools for both buses and, and during transitions, but still allow students to wear masks if the parents so decide. Um, so I would like to ask if the board would like to comment on any of that. I think that we're, we're at that stage.
I think so too. I agree.
I support that recommendation.
Yes.
Yeah.
I want us to be normal again.
I think we all do. I think we all do. And I, I don't want us to throw caution to the wind, um, but I do believe that it's still time. And some of the, some of the practices, I'm going to reemphasize with the principles to make sure, just the hand washing and just social distancing, things of that nature, we should, we should do anyway, regardless. Uh, and it'll cut down, and if it's not COVID, it's the flu or just normal sickness that we need to continue with. So, um, with, with the board's agreeance on that, I'd like to go ahead and effective tomorrow, do that. Yep.
Good with it.
All right, so next area up here, uh, booster shots. So, you know, a lot of talk about booster shots in the news and whether you're pro or against the, the vaccination. Um, you know, I, I got my two shots and I'm going to get a booster shot. And so on the, the tenth of November, the Department of Health will come to Todd Grant Elementary School, be in the gym from three to five. And we're going to offer both the J and J and the Moderna shot to our teachers, our employees. And also if any of them want to get their first shot, they can come in and get their first shot, um, and then they'll schedule them for a second shot. So I think it's a great opportunity again to continue to make sure that, um, we do everything possible till, still to prevent the spread of this, this virus. Any questions on COVID nineteen and anything we're doing or anything else that needs to be discussed?
I just want to say, I think our, our staff, uh, and, um, Mr. Moss and, and Ms. Thompson has done an outstanding job. This thing could have been a heck of a lot worse. And, um, they, they stared it down and did a fine job.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, um, next area underneath Goal Area Three is the incident that took place Friday. And I, I'm just going to give what I know to be facts as it stands right now. When it was first reported that there might be a threat at the high school, we immediately started looking into it and notified our law enforcement. They looked into it, in fact, they looked into all of the information that was presented up through two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, just, just making sure. We take it very seriously, but at the same point, we also realize that oftentimes these are rumors that spread and get embellished and grow legs and things of that nature. But we never want to be such that we don't take it seriously. So we did ask, uh, I had a good conversation with, with Sheriff Jessup and, um, he beefed up security at the high school just in case of that. And I call it a, a show of force or, or, or a presence. Um, I, I can't tell you the number of parents who pulled up in front and said, thank you. Thank you for taking it seriously, thank you for having the extra security. And, um, our kid, I feel as our kids are safe. Seventy percent of our students were, were counted as present. So we have thirty percent that were not on that particular day. So, um, I have dealt with this more times than I care to say at the various places I've been. And I, I don't know if, I, I probably am underestimating that I've done this at least fifty times. And they all come up with the same conclusion, um, unfortunately. But at the same point, we never wanted to slide that something might possibly happen. So, you know, one of the questions that's raised on, on this, um, many parents kept their children at home out of fear of the what-ifs. And I have been asked of whether or not we really will excuse those days. And so, um, part of me says, you know, we send a good, strong message that, that the rumor that was out there was false, that it was bogus, that it was a hoax, that we had extra security just in case, and we did have seventy percent of the students that did show. But the other part of it is the, the human aspect that a parent, that might very well be concerned. Um, just to be cautious about sending the wrong message because we don't want something like this to happen again where somebody says, I can get a day off. They write something on the wall and this is what happened. So, uh, we're going to, we're going to move forward with trepidation on just making sure we handle it in the right manner. Um, I've talked to the principal, I think he would like to call, count them as excused absences and I'm going to support him. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware of, we don't take that lightly. And we want our parents to understand that, um, we will always make sure that we're taking the interest of our students to heart when this stuff comes up. And we take it extremely seriously and we'll make sure we go through our protocol each and every time this, this takes place. And to God forbid if it ever takes place again. Um, but, uh, but realistically, I think the number was twenty-eight school shootings all of last year. It's awful. But we have, we have put procedures in place, our, our training that we continue to undergo. Um, we're very careful, we work extremely well with our law enforcement, um, in our, in our, within our schools, with our SROs. And I think we're blessed in this community to, to see the way that we have things and the way it was handled the other day. Any comments from anybody about it at all? I know that people get out there and say, well, I saw it. I have yet to see it, neither did the sheriff's department or sheriff's office. Nobody saw an actual threat. It was a rumor of a threat, that I saw it, who saw it and saw it and et cetera.
Well, I think within that same week, there was an issue in other counties across the state and even across the United States, rumors. And I don't know that any of it ever was valid.
I know that there was a shooting in Statesboro, an actual shooting, and there was a, there was a sibling in Wayne County. And I know that Wayne County had to lock down. And I think again, a lot of that stuff, it is amazing how quickly social media just throws it out there. And, you know, it, it grows legs, literally. And in this case, I, I believe that's what took place. Any questions at all? All right, well, thank you so much for, for understanding and I applaud our administration for how well they handled that.
Very thankful for the sheriff's department for...
They did a great job stepping up. Um, along the same line that we talked about earlier, that, you know, with Mr. Masa and, and Ms. Thompson, that they do a lot of work with the schools and coordinating, you know, the close contact tracing anytime COVID comes up. And it's an arduous task. I mean, it, it's, it's time-consuming. So the Department of Health came up surprisingly and provided a hundred and, I think a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars over two years. So sixty-seven thousand dollars a year to support a, a nurse assistant, um, supplies, et cetera, to do that job for us, uh, for two years. And so, uh, they would be an employee of ours, but funded by them. And we follow the guidelines that says, you know, that, that we're going to make sure that everything that this individual does is in compliance with the, the intent of the grant. Uh, I think it's an exceptional thing that will, they'll work directly with Mr. McNair, uh, and our nurses and in tracking and, and doing everything that's there.
We have two candidates at this point, so we're very excited about possibly funding some, and assist, um, Mr. Masa and Ms. Thompson, um, pretty much taking over the COVID responses for us and then working with our schools, um, assisting the nurses in terms of like flu shots and different things that happen at school. They're going to be based out of Todd Grant School also, will be working at all the places.
All right, under Goal Area Four, Quality Workforce Personnel, I do have some personnel actions in executive session. Um, under Goal Area Five, Community Engagement, and I want to just say this because the Sapporo Foundation has been so good to us over the last two years. And we're, we're in discussions right now about possibly funding a, a teen center to support the Boys and Girls Club. And what we'd like to, to start talking about if this comes to fruition, if you can pull up that picture of Oak Grove, is that if, if we do this, you know, the intent was that Oak Grove sits right in front of the middle school and it blocks it. And if, if you've ever really taken a good and hard look at the front of that school, it's pretty awful. And so, and it blocks everything that's, that's truly there for the middle school. The other part of it is, it all sits right on what was the original Oglethorpe Square. And so with the intent that if we get the kitchen project done, the kitchen will end up in this part of the middle school right here, okay? So that's the old voc tech area. And so that becomes an indoor, indoor cafeteria kitchen area, which allows us to take this building here, which is, what, seventy years old, pretty close? Um, instead of spending a million-plus dollars renovating that, we're going to spend it over here, which allows us to look at demolishing the majority of this building. Now, what I'd like to do is if we get the funding to renovate it, is possibly keep a portion of it that's not directly in front of the middle school. And that would be probably right about here. You see where that line is? That's a, that's a firewall, great place to possibly, this is another one here that we'll look at. And if we can afford it, then, that we would renovate it if the board so agrees. But that allows for that building to be used as a true teen center, um, similar to what a lot of the, um, cities in, uh, the country are provided by the Boys and Girls Club. Any questions on that?
Now, what was teen center, what does that?
Um, it primarily focuses on a place that they can come and, you know, hang out, get tutoring, you know, there's fun place, it's safe, it's supervised, um, get them off the street, but they know they can go there and have that safe environment. The, Glen County has a fabulous one over there and it's, it's probably one of the best in, in the country. And so we'll replicate it very close to what, what they've done over there.
So is that portion of the building, is that in the, um, Oglethorpe Square?
It's probably right on the edge of it. It's a good area to keep as well, based on it, because it doesn't block the, the view of the middle school. It's close enough to the other area that we have the Boys and Girls Club and the, and the new pavilion. Um, it's a good central location if we end up doing it. Any other questions on any of that? Madam Chair, barring anything else, um, I would like to just ask if we could go into executive session for personnel and legal.
Okay. Could I have a motion? Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Question by Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you all.
Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss legal and personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewlett, second, by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor?
Will you make note that he's not here?
Yes, motion carries four-zero. Mr. McIver had to leave. All right, any board comments?
Um, I've got something, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Khan and, uh, Mr. Green. Um, they, you know, my mother drove a bus here for over twenty years and that's a, that's a job that starts early in the morning and, uh, it ends late. And for them to step up and, and do what they did, um, with the, the tragedy we had around here, um, you know, that's, uh, they stepped up and, and did a, a good thing. As did our students. Um, you know, I tell you, I, I don't know what I'd have done in that situation, you know? So for, you know, these kids to be, you know, young like they are, you know, they jumped in and, and went to work. So, you know, good job by our, our students. And, um...
And their parents.
Yes, and their parents for, for teaching them. Um, and we got a lot of good things going on in our school system. We sure do. Good, good and quiet.
Very quiet. Thank you.
I'll echo Mr. Hewlett's comments and, uh, agree with that. And, uh, we do have a lot of good things going on, got the holidays coming up, so looking forward to finishing out on a strong note.
And I'm excited that, um, our intercession breaks are being well-attended and that the children are taking an interest in, um, catching up to, to speed from COVID and so forth. And very glad that we only currently are tracking one COVID case. So we're all very thankful.
Okay, and I'm thankful that we can get rid of those masks and let our students be children again. Um, you know, that they, I think they have suffered more than us adults have because part of their childhood has been taken by being covered up. And, um, you know, continue the hand washing and all the protocols, but let's let our children breathe and be children again.
I feel like doing a ceremony.
Be a kid.
Retire it.
All right, you or Richie have anything? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.